Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the December 12th Florida Selectmen's Meeting. We'll go through the agenda. Seven o'clock, we'll have Citizens Input, 7:05 Selectmen's Update, 7:15 Town Managers' Update, 7:25 Assistant Town Managers' Update, and we have a bunch of action items. As you can tell, we're in our holiday season, so pretty light agenda. Doc, can you leave us in the pledge?
Yep.
With allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just in time. Well, after seven o'clock. Is there anybody here for Citizens Input?
I don't know. I was wondering if you collectors had any idea what was going on with the water in the morning, because that's what my water looked like.
Of course, I heard of it.
I know there was a water break over the weekend on the Passas Centennial on South Street side. Did you try calling the Water Department or asking them?
No.
Yeah.
Did that continuously the last time, and I got nowhere, so.
Yeah, there was a water break.
Sunday morning, six o'clock?
It was, yeah.
Okay.
Is there a water meeting tonight?
There might be meeting tonight.
Where do they meet?
They meet down at Public Porch.
At Elm Street?
You can bring your bag. You can address it to them.
Oh, I've left the many bottles on their door. All right, thank you. Merry Christmas. I have the, it leaked before I left, so I gotta go home wipe up the floor.
Anybody else here for Citizens Input? Seen none. 7:05 Selectmen's Update. Just want to point out, if anybody hasn't noticed, we have, I think for the first time, a menorah on the common. Tonight being the first night of Hanukkah, I'd like to wish our Jewish residents Happy Hanukkah. There is a technical difficulty tonight. There's no power to the menorah, so there should be one candle lit, but we'll get on top of that.
If I figure that out tonight, if we can.
Yep. On next Monday at 6:30, there's gonna be a ceremony presented by Rabbi Yossi Kivman from Chabad in Mansfield. Everybody's invited to attend. There'll be a lighting ceremony and some light refreshments, so if anybody wants to come down. If anybody hasn't experienced a candle lighting, it's pretty unique, different. What's the date and the time again? Monday, I think it's the 18th, at 6:30. So, should be good. Should be a good time. That's all I have. Jim?
Yeah, I can update. Last Monday, we went to, a pretty impressive group went to the State House. They had a joint meeting with the Senate and the House of Representatives, going back, what do you, I think, five years ago when we started this, to change the state law to make every person in the Commonwealth that works for the state or town, and any youth, coach, churches, et cetera, down those lines, to be mandated reporters. So if you see something, at that point, you're already trained and you are mandated to say something. So it was quite a group. Ginny went, Reverend Dudley went, Detective, not Detective, Sergeant Noonan went, Bob Korea, State Rep. Jay Barrows, Senator Feeney, Linda Walsh, Nancy Stockwell. I think that's it.
And Bob Korea.
And Bob Korea, the chairman. And, you know, we had to present it, but the question and answer was very telling. They were into it, and so we made it to the next round. So it's like anything else, it's a process. So hopefully, next year, we'll be sitting here. Foxborough had a hand in changing the state law, which is a long path to get here, but it was nice to see. And then Bill Keegan had written a letter, and also Superintendent Spinelli. So that's all part of the record, and that was read into the record.
What's the timetable from here? What else, where else does it go?
A couple of them wanted to see what the training was involved, so, oh, I should've said the YMCA, Tony Kelsey was there. So they asked to see what the training modules were. So when we came back, we sent them, courtesy of the YMCA, free training for every member of the House and Senate to go through it. They're gonna review that, and then Ginny, you might know better than I what the next step would be.
Well, they have to vote it out of this hearing. They didn't vote that day, but they will vote, and then it will go to the third reading, the Bill of Third Reading. And then after that, once, if it gets out of third reading, then it goes to the House floor. But I will say, I mean, I've been to a lot of hearings. That was a very, it was a very good hearing. They listened, but importantly, they asked questions, and they asked really good questions. And the chairman, she was talking about, they have a study or something? What was she saying?
Well, they have another committee that's been on this for a while, wanted us to connect with them to help them.
Yeah, which was unbeknownst to, unbeknownst to us. So I think it looks very good for that film.
Well, I think, having taken the training, any of the members of the House or Senate that actually takes the time and goes through the training, it's eye-opening, absolutely eye-opening.
And the interesting thing was, when you go through it, you're sitting with high school kids that are youth coaches, and you're sitting with adults, and at the beginning, you're sitting there saying, oh, another two hours of a Saturday, I'm gonna give up. But the dialogue and the eye-opening stuff that you see, it's not a lecture, it's actually, oh my God, I didn't realize this, and I didn't realize this is what you look for. And I guess more importantly, if you see it, the course to go to report it, and it's not as onerous as people think.
Yeah. I think, I think parents should take the training as well, because it tells you what the warning signs are, and it goes through, you know, like Jim said, what to do, and go through the steps. But the warning signs are like, without having someone tell you what to look for, as a parent, I don't think you'd know what to look for.
Well, we're all part of a society that was, that's pretty much has overlooked that for so long, that now, when people say it to you, or you point it out, this pointed out to you, you pay attention to it. Whereas before, you would overlook it, and, or just, you know, pass it, pass it over. This is gonna be, I thought, I thought it was very eye-opening as well. It was, it was really helpful.
You know, the kind of, sitting back, the nicest thing about, I think, the presentation was, we weren't going in there and asking anything on speculation. We told them that the town of Foxborough has trained every single employee in our town, our school system, and over 2,000 people that have come. I think he just, you couldn't believe it. And then the budget of $2,500 to do it, I think is reflective of, people see a need, and they put it in the importance, and don't hammer you on unions and overtime. So it's hopefully not gonna, it'll be a good, good year.
This one affects people on all levels. The union really has nothing to do with it. It affects people at home, as well as anywhere else in life.
But you know, when I took the training, what was interesting, what I got out of it, I looked back in my history, and I said to myself, okay, this makes sense, dealing with kids that went to school, you know. I mean, really, it was quite powerful training.
Anybody else, anything? Bill?
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I have a couple announcements for you tonight. First, I'm pleased to announce that on a couple levels, the USCPA has announced that they are taking, removing the Hathaway-Patterson site from the Superfund list. They announced it, they've actually announced it officially, but officially notified us today. We had a phone call with the EPA, as well as the Mass DEP. And both the Mass DEP and the EPA are in concurrence, which means that it's no longer an active site in terms of remediation, but it is gonna continue to be a managed site. So they'll continue to do periodic reviews of the, of the water and testing. It'll continue to be evaluated every five years, add-on infinity, infinity, until the water is at a point where nobody speculates there's any more concerns with it. But this is a significant breakthrough, because it's rare that sites actually reach this point. And the EPA wanted to make sure that was really well noted in terms of the announcement today, that it's rare that sites actually reach this point. So they're really quite pleased that we've been able to reach this conclusion. And that, and that, it should be abundantly clear, though, that even though the EPA is taking it off its active list, it is still gonna be very intimately involved. So, and there are clearly restrictions in terms of development of that site overall. So we had both the town of Mansfield, as well as town of Foxborough, on the phone today, announcing the information that this was taken off both sites, and that we will continue to work closely on making sure that site stays in its current state, which is actually a parking lot, where the folks are familiar, it's on County Street. It's an active parking lot for the train station. The site, the site on the Mansfield side is still undeveloped, but it is covered with gravel, a thick gravel. They have not reached any conclusions about it, though we did have a very preliminary discussion today about how we might partner together to help develop that further for future parking opportunities for the train, because that's gonna be, continue to be an issue as that site develops all around the train station. So that might be an active opportunity for both of us to partner on that, on effort. So we'll continue to see how that develops and evolves over time. But it's good news to be able to report to you that we've reached that conclusion. The second thing I wanted to bring to your attention is that we had some additional good news this week, is that for three-plus years now, the Fire Chief, along with former Chief Ollary, as well with current Chief Baker, have been working to try and secure a, what is known as a emergency equipment site, that, to be located here in Foxborough, as a regional location for emergency equipment, which would, things such as traffic control, additional lighting systems, and portable lighting systems, remain available to the town, and that we can be stored right near public, right near public safety. They've worked on this for three and a half years. They finally got approval the other day from through Serpent. So this is a major, significant improvement for us. The chief will be here at your meeting next, on December 19th, to actually announce it formally to you, but he wanted me to make that announcement to you tonight. And so it's good news that he can ask any questions, detailed questions he'll have about it at that meeting. And then the third thing I want to announce, which is great news, is that we were able to secure a new building commissioner. Many of you know that Bill Kispow, our longtime building commissioner, and a longtime friend of many people in this town, and did a terrific job, has always done a terrific job in this town, is retiring at the end of this year, which is actually two weeks from now. It's coming, coming up close. But we have secured a new, a new replacement for him. His name is Nick Riccio. For those who may recognize the name, Nick was the former building commissioner in Mansfield, and is currently the building commissioner in Rantham. But he also served as an interim town manager in Mansfield at one time during his career. So he's, Nick is an attorney, as well as being a very active and 23-year veteran of being a building commissioner. So he is about one of the top people that we're looking to secure. We're very happy that we were able to get him to come here, and he'll be starting with us the first week in January?
January 8th.
January 8th, second, second week in January. So some good news on all three fronts in that regard, so. Proud to be able to report that information to you all. And we will have a new executive assistant reporting to you.
Yes.
He'll be at the meeting next week. We'll leave that as a surprise for the time being, and we'll make that announcement when she appears.
She'll be attending the next meeting to meet you.
Okay.
Bill, any update on the Semirac buildings?
Nothing yet, Chris. We're still, we have been reaching out with, working with the state, the State 911, and so they're trying to make their adjustments on their, getting the contract approved, so we can actually do the actual study of it. So that's, that's between State 911 and the director, they're trying to, he's trying to work, actively work with them on that. He's already reached out and met with them at, in Middleboro, and they had some number of questions. He's answered all the questions, they're just, they're just trying to decide how to do it now. So at that point.
And also, you know, on our agenda, I don't know if you guys had talked about it earlier. What's with all the bars down at Patriots Place wanting to open up at 10?
Well, so, so I'm glad you raised it now, because, so now that you have, have the 10 o'clock approval, that's been approved by town meeting, that process, what happened was a bunch of letters came in this week. And so we, we thought it was, it was as simple as just approving it, but actually, we did some further research, and we found out that we, it does require a two-week notice, two-week hearing, hearing notice. So we're gonna have to put it in the paper and notify everyone. So the option before you is to have individual hearings with each one, or you can have one big hearing on all of them, and deal with them all at once, and then decide how you wanna deal. Because I know, different ones have different circumstances. Some of them are more bar-oriented, the other ones actually have a, other applicants actually have a brunch that they start serving at 10 o'clock on weekends, on Sundays. That's why they wanna serve at that time. So that's the question. Not sure how you wanna handle that.
I think we gotta take them individually, because of the different circumstances. Could do them all at the same night.
Okay.
You know, but.
Meet with them individually.
One big hearing.
Might be able to do one hearing notice with a number of times in it.
Yep. We did check with town council, and you can do it that way. But you might, you probably have to meet with them individually. So there'll probably be like eight, nine, or so.
Yeah, probably.
In that range, so, that'll apply.
Well, a couple had multiple requests.
That's true.
Right. And some of them were very specific in their requests, others were more general in their request, but those are the ones you wanna focus on to see if, in fact, they actually serve brunch. And that's really the purpose of doing that. So, so everybody saw it, they saw the opportunity to, to then apply, and so now they're doing that, so we just need to fulfill the process.
Well, did, did the other, the letters that we got were from Patriot Place. Did the other restaurants know?
Yes.
Did they, did they realize the opportunity that they have, if they wanna?
Lafayette.
We had non-Patriot Place people.
We've had several.
But no, Lafayette, no, Lafayette House only asked for certain dates. They didn't ask for the, every Sunday.
Yeah. I don't think they serve a brunch.
That's typical to their model. They only do brunch on certain dates.
But I just want the other restaurants to realize.
Any members that, Fox cares, way back when in the fall, we went to their meeting, and we talked to them about this legislation. So they were following it closely, and then when it was voted at town meeting, it was in the newspaper and all, you know, as part of the warrant. So we feel that it was publicized widely.
And Lafayette House did, is on our agenda for both.
Right. And so.
Specific dates, AM 10 o'clock.
So having the public hear anything is good, because it does two things. It wanted, it gets, gets it out there, so people know what, what's gonna happen at those locations. But two, it also makes it further public that, that that opportunity does exist, and that people can actually commit and apply if they need to.
Not that every restaurant that has, every place that has a license is gonna ask for that, because.
That's right.
Kind of specialized.
Yeah, exactly.
It's usually. Still the food requirement.
But also the type of food that you issue.
Okay. So you won't be dealing with those issues tonight, in short, so.
We need a future meeting at least two weeks from the date that we publish.
We're trying to publish it tomorrow.
Today was the deadline, so we have to ask for.
Try to publish it Thursday. Thursday will come out.
Yeah, we have to ask.
Two weeks from Thursday, the 28th.
Is everybody okay with that?
I thought we weren't gonna have a meeting on the 28th.
We, no, the 26th is the one you canceled. 28th is a Thursday. We have to go at least two weeks from the time of publication in the paper, which would be the 28th or 29th, a special meeting, or waiting till after the New Year.
Anything involving the stadium requires it to be posted twice. So that's why we need the two weeks for the stadium. So we would have a Selectmen's meeting on a Thursday?
We could do maybe even a morning meeting.
If we do, now, you're gonna have to do it at night with all those, and if they want.
Yeah, with all those groups coming in.
But if we do that, I'm fine with doing it on the 28th, but let's have that is the only thing.
It would be the only item that I know of, yeah.
No, let's have it as that is the only.
Okay.
And again, that's dependent on.
I got that message.
What the mercy of the reporter will let us publish late tomorrow. Today was the deadline. So see if they let us do that.
Yeah, in looking at, it affects a couple. One's the 23rd, one's the 24th, a couple the 24th.
Yeah, you've got, there is a home game on the 24th, which would affect, but that's, you're talking about a difference of an hour for that day.
Yeah. This is a few extra minutes now. Quick question on the, through the chair, if that's okay. I think the construction and the duration of the Market Street sewer has reached a tipping point where I'm starting to hear complaints from businesses and neighbors. The condition of the road, off-hours, the piles of stuff that's out there, the ledge blasting. Where are we with that and finishing that up?
I just, I've been working with a town engineer on that on a daily basis. So, and folks that, a couple people raised concerns, and then we were able to address them right away. There was another one that was, that came to our attention today, and I sent the town engineer out directly to meet with him, to address it. So I'll have a better handle of that tomorrow. It was, the understanding I had, it was supposed to be finishing up. I thought within, within one or two more weeks, it should be done.
Are we getting updated on the cost? I mean, I know when this went through, there was borings and minimal ledge. All I've seen is blasting for the last two weeks of substantial ledge, so.
What I've been told, it was, that was a lot that was included in the price. So hopefully, if they didn't do it, they obviously would've saved that. But they, they actually stopped doing blasting and started doing more of a drilling process, because they found out to be more effective.
Rockets, rockets. They get it.
Expensive, yeah, it's expensive.
Yeah. It'd be all buttoned up before, obviously, the middle of the winter, I guess, right?
That's the plan. That's the plan. We, I was hoping it'd be done sooner than this, but unfortunately, they, the initial findings did not reveal all the rock that was supposed to be up there, so. But, but it did, it was included, because they knew there was gonna be some. I'll know better tomorrow. I'll give everybody a report afterwards, after I know that.
Thanks.
Here, Bill.
I just have a couple of items. Mostly, we're dealing with post-town meeting issues. So as, you know, things got approved at town meeting now, we're implementing contract terms. We're working with our vendor to do online performance evaluations that were part of the contract, job descriptions. Accounting's working closely on costing out some of the stuff. And we're really deep into budget season, so everybody's submitted, as of December 8th, to randy, and we'll be sitting down soon to meet with each department over their, their budget requests. We got our budget in this year. We're gonna go full steam ahead now with, if you recall, on town meeting, we originally had the fire contract on there, but we never really got to complete the process. So we're working very closely with Fire Department on trying to get their contract done, and then police are next. So a lot of collective bargaining coming up, and just trying to wrap up some of the hiring. It seems like we keep waiting for a month where there's no turnover or hiring, but, you know, we've done some internal promotions, so that it causes our own internal gaps that we're advertising for. But it's all good. That's it.
Action items?
All righty. Move to approve the 2018 licenses.
Second.
What you made, second, any further discussion? Seen none, all's in favor?
All right. So we're gonna skip this one, correct, or?
Yeah, the next, the next several that are requesting the additional licenses for the, will be postponed until, until the date, would be the 28th at this point?
Yeah, but we should be able to do 5.04, though, right? The second Scorpio one?
New Year's Eve.
New Year's Eve?
Yes.
Okay. So move to approve Scorpion Bars, extension of hours of operation on New Year's Eve, to allow customers on premises up until 1:30 a.m. with no alcohol served after 1 a.m.
Now, wasn't your, isn't it after 12:30?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I thought. So I think you should.
So.
According to. So amend that to no alcohol being served after 12:30.
Second.
And let them know that we made that change.
We'll note that in the letter.
Yeah.
What you made, second, any further discussion? Seen none, all's in favor?
All right. Skip those two, skip those two, 5:07, skip. 5.08, move to approve the extension of their one-day, the New England Patriots Travelable Foundation's one-day all-alcohol license issued from December 4th and December 30, 24th and December 31st to permit serving.
Can't do.
No, that one we can't do. I apologize. I thought it was just a one-day license.
You can probably do the 24th license for the one day, but it'd be no earlier than 11 o'clock. Right?
Right. And then they'd have to come before us for the.
For the 31st.
31st. So let's.
But didn't we already grant them a one-day license for the 24th and 30, 31st?
Yes.
And this is just an extension?
My apologies. You're right. You're absolutely right.
So on the 24th, they have to stick with that one, and 31st, they can come to the meeting?
Yep.
Okay. Dally, I'll skip that one. First Lafayette House, skip that one. No, I guess both Lafayette Houses. They're both for 10 a.m. Toby Keith is looking for 10 a.m. So we'll go right to 5.13. Move to accept a gift donation in the amount of $35 to the Council on Aging for the lockbox from Anonymous.
Second.
What you made, second, any further discussion? Seen none, all's in favor?
All right. Move to accept gift donation in the amount of $140 to the ACO for an adoption fee from Anonymous.
Second.
What you made, second, any further discussion? Seen none, all's in favor?
All right. Move to accept a gift donation in the amount of $500 to the Council on Aging to be used towards programs at the Council on Aging. $100 is from Anonymous in memory of Nancy Williams, and $400 is for two programs from the Friends of Foxborough Seniors.
Second.
What you made, second, any further discussion? Seen none, all's in favor?
All right. Move to accept a gift donation in the amount of $50 to Veteran Services for the Iraq and Afghanistan War Memorial from Mark and Naomi Boucher.
Second.
What you made, second, any further discussion? Seen none, all's in favor?
All right. Move to accept a gift donation to administration of a Homer White painting to the town of Foxborough from Dennis and Suzanne Colwell.
Second.
What you made, second, any further discussion? Seen none, all's in favor?
Move to approve the gift donation in the amount of $75 to the Council on Aging in memory of Ruth Henderson from Anonymous.
Second.
What you made, second, any further discussion? Seen none, all's in favor?
I just have a question.
Yep.
The meeting, we having a meeting next, the 19th?
19th.
Okay. Do we have an agenda already for the 19th?
Not yet.
We're introducing Pam. I think we're gonna have the meeting room policy on there. Those are the two things that I. The chief's gonna call. And the chief's gonna.
Okay.
About the cash flow.
Is it, is it time-sensitive, that we couldn't move those two items to the following meeting, rather than having two sets of meetings? The special meeting that we're having on Thursday night?
Yeah, I can't, if, that's actually a good idea. Cancel the.
19th?
The 19th.
If it's not time-sensitive, and there's not a lot of.
Chris, want to do the, you okay with that?
As long as you just.
All right.
Light, because I'm anticipating that it might go long, but I don't know.
The only thing that came to my mind is, like, the next week would be the last week for the rest of the licenses that have come in, seven, that we still haven't gotten our paperwork or address yet. So.
Yeah, there's four restaurant bars and like three other people who haven't paid yet.
If, if it makes sense. I mean, it's just, the holiday season is busy.
That's a good point, I mean.
Yeah. And that's why I wanted a light one on the, I didn't wanna have three meetings, so.
Okay.
I mean, people gonna be around after Christmas, but, you know, that week.
Mm-hmm.
Let's find out if we can get our late posting in tomorrow, and then we can reach out to you and let you know about.
Well, what we could do is, we can start earlier, too.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, start at like 6:00.
Yeah, we'll start at 6:00.
That's a good point.
Okay.
That's a good idea.
You guys would be. You guys would be okay starting at six, right?
Six, yeah. Okay. Good idea.
I just wanted, I guess, acknowledge a long, very longstanding member of the community, Ray McKay, passed away earlier in the week. So man of integrity, salt of the earth, and just condolences to his family and his extended family. Left a hole in a lot of people's spirits, so.
I believe his service is Saturday, I think.
That's why I hesitated to bring it up. I wasn't sure of the dates.
Yeah. I'm assuming it's going to be at Roberts', so you could probably check the website, robbitz.com. But he was, he was quite a guy. He was, he was the person you got your Christmas tree from, you got your wreath, and you got your pumpkin at Halloween, and the leftover pumpkins he would carve. And so you'd go by, and for a couple of days after Halloween, they'll all be lit pumpkins. It was like a tradition.
Eventually, he was a teacher.
Yeah, he was a teacher.
And worked for the town.
Yeah.
Taking care of the weights and measures.
And we actually honored him a year or so ago.
Yeah.
You remember, we gave him a plaque.
I just, I wanted to tell, I just, I got an update today on the wood carving for the new seal that's going to go in the room. It's coming along really, really well. He's hoping it'll be done hopefully by the first of the year, hopefully, if any luck. But detail, amazing detail that he's doing this, it's just really, really well done. Really well done.
Good.
So, anything else?
Move to adjourn?
What you made. Second, any further discussion? Seeing none? Good night.